Um. Meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Appeals of October twelfth. Um, we have at the moment, oh, there's number four, our fourth members coming in, but let's do a roll, roll call with the people that the board members that are here. Elizabeth Akers Moore.
Present.
Ravi Faiya.
Present.
Thomas Swain.
Present.
And Chair Teal Kinnaman is obviously present. Uh, first item on the agenda tonight uh is one sixty-six Commonwealth Avenue. Howard J. Solbeck uh for special permit with site plan review and zoning bylaw sections four, two, three, seven, two, seven, seven, two, twelve, eleven, six, and eleven, eight for a combined business residence use in the Flap Lane Conservancy District and will leave from parking for thirty-one parking spaces. As I said, one sixty-six Commonwealth Avenue. Um, the applicant requested without discussion a continuation to the meeting of November ninth. Um. Heather, are we, do we have anything scheduled for that day already?
No, they will be um.
So it's one Commonwealth meeting after the other Commonwealth meeting.
Um.
Is that correct?
Hold on just a minute. But let me see. Sorry, I'm not.
The other one is two fifty-two Commonwealth Avenue. That's apparently scheduled.
I, yeah, I just wanna make sure what time that one is.
Hmm. But, you know, ideally, I'd like one of these Commonwealths starts at seven oh five and the other one at seven ten. And so that we can do a special permit before then because
I.
One, one or both will be continued next uh meeting as well.
It. It appears that two fifty-two Commonwealth Ave is already at seven o'clock.
Oh, yeah.
There are no new applications for the November ninth meeting, so it's just the two continuances.
Okay, then I request a motion to continue this uh this application to the November uh, what do you say, ninth uh, meeting at seven oh five.
So moved.
Second.
Um, all those in favor? Elizabeth Akers Moore.
Hi.
Ravi Faiya.
Hi.
And Chair votes I as well. So first agenda item done. Um, how are we doing? Where are, I have seven oh five, right?
I have seven oh five, yep.
Yep. Well, we stalled long enough. Excellent, excellent. Seven oh five, Jane Adams and William Hill for a special permit on the zoning bylaw section seven, one, three, seven, one, five, and eleven, six to demolish the existing detached garage and construct a new six hundred and sixty-two square foot deep detached two-story garage in a new location that is two point four feet from the pop property line and a one thousand four hundred and six square foot addition on a non-conforming single-family dwelling that increases the gross floor area by more than fifty percent at two A three Central Street. Who's here for the applicant to present this? I s- I, yeah, I see him out move and I, I know what you said. But we can hear it. There you are.
Okay, um.
Go ahead.
Yes, I'm uh, no, she's helping with the screen. Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah, I sure can.
Um, good evening. I'm Lori Crockett. I'm an architect and I'm working with Jane Adams and Will Hill, the homeowners of two eighty-three Central Street. We are requesting relief from the reference sections of the zoning bylaw that are listed on the application. The lot is on a corner and therefore needs to comply with front setbacks on two sides. The existing garage does not meet the required setback. We are proposing an addition that exceeds the square footage allowed on a non-conforming structure by nineteen percent, but we are below the FAR. The house is a small bungalow style built in twenty nineteen twenty-one. Um, there's a small front porch on Central Street side. Uh, the house has full dormers in the front and the back. The lot slopes towards the rear of the property and there is detached two-car garage that is accessed by a driveway on Brown Street. Um, the family purchased the house about two years ago. The property backs up to Cousins Field, and this is actually the Cousins' house that, who they purchased the house from. Uh, and this lot is the major reason that they purchased the house. We are proposing moving the driveway to Central Street, typical of the houses on Central Street and preferred by the fire department. The new addition will be off the rear of the house and will match the existing roof, eve, and dormer lines. The existing garage will be replaced by a new garage of similar size to the existing with a room above. The new garage will move down towards the rear of the lot and follow the same setback as the existing. This allows for the backyard to remain open to Cousins Field. Moving the driveway to Central Street eliminates the pavement in the backyard, which is preferable to the homeowners. The owners are sensitive to the impairments and scale of the house. The proposed addition will keep the house in the general size of those in the neighborhood, and the additional space will allow their three adult children to visit and gather at their home. Our design is meant to preserve the openness of Cousins Field, not only for the homeowners, but also for the neighbors. We believe the addition will enhance the character of the existing house and complement the Central Street neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, clear presentation. Are there any questions for members of the board?
So i- it looks like moving the driveway, you know, obviously you'll get rid of the impervious area where the old driveway was. Do we know whether the new one, it looks like it might be a bit longer but narrower? Uh, is there overall a decrease?
That is uh, in the impervious, I would say it is narrower. The one they now is probably sixteen to eighteen feet wide, and the new one will be twelve. Uh, will go down, yes, and it will slope slightly. Um, but we are looking at doing some nice granite paving at the base of it for filtration and soften the um, the asphalt a little bit.
Hmm. Correct.
Yeah, thanks, thanks, Ravi. That's where I was going as well. The, I mean, because the, where the current garage is, that is all becoming asphalt, and then where the new garage is, that's becoming impervious. Um, so, you know, my, my eye sees, there it is, my eye sees a clear increase in as, given the addition, because the addi- the proposed addition takes up the entire um, old driveway as well. So my eye sees, my time, I sees a quite a bit of impervious increase and um. Yeah, I'll come, I'll come back to uh, to this and uh, later on, I think, but I'd like to get some more comments and questions from Thomas Elizabeth.
I, I know this uh, area quite well. I, I live not too far from there and walk down to Cousins Field fairly frequently. Uh, I think this is a nice uh, adjustment. I do think it's nice that they're gonna try to protect the views from and to Cousins Field, which is a lovely field. Uh, and so the fact that they're gonna shut that driveway off to Brown Street, to me, is an advantage because I agree with the architect that the normal driveway on Central Street does come out, or for homes, on Central Street does come out to uh, Central Street. So to cut it off on Brown, for me at least, is an advantage. I think it enhances the neighborhood.
Thank, thank you. Elizabeth?
Um, I agree, and I would note, we got at least one letter of support. I don't know, a couple was a couple. Um, I, I agree. I think it's a benefit moving the driveway on, onto Central Street, and I think the addition is in keeping with the neighborhood and, and um, the, the increase in impervious doesn't bug me as much as it bugs you, Teal, so I know you're gonna circle back to it, so interested to hear what you have to say.
Um, yeah, um, but before that, I would like to open this uh, full public comment. You mentioned that we already had at least one letter of support. I'm just double checking how, whether there's any, any others, but um, are there any members of the public who uh, would like to speak and comment on this? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, I will uh, close the public comment section of the uh, of the meeting. Um. There's one, two, three, four, five uh, letters in support, so that's pretty good, and, and, and I, I agree with everybody that, that this is a um, uh, seems to be a huge improvement, but I, I do wanna, and I've done this in the past when there was increases in, in impervious area. Um. I asked for some, some infiltration. I don't necessarily uh, would like to have a full stormwater management report done, but um, especially given the uh, letter in the Concord Bridge from the uh, Public Works Director. It's from a week or two ago, where indeed he is um, looking to set up a stormwater utility for the town, and he indeed mentions it that, that our stormwater uh, stormwater infrastructure in the town is getting a little bit overwhelmed. Um, I think in, in, if we wanna make sure that um, the applications that increase the impervious area uh, comply with eleven point six, then we need to request some sort of infiltration of stormwater. Um, and we can't just have it runoff into the street. Um, and if this disarounds back to eleven point six five, uh, six, three, and a little bit to eleven point six five. Um, so that's would be a condition that I would like to uh, add to this uh, to this permit. Um.
Okay.
I know you have a, an engineer uh, for this project, and I'm sure they, they will come up uh, with something. Um, and I uh, I think Miss, Mr. Hill, you, you, there's something wrong with your uh, your audio here.
Yeah.
There you are.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you turn your volume down?
Turn the volume a little bit.
All set. Yes, um, that's fine with us. Uh, uh, having uh, dealing with the impervious um, uh, uh, situation, we can, we can work on that. Um, and if you wanna make that a condition, as long as I have the floor, I just, I, uh, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and, and thanks for members of the board. Uh, when this house was built about a hundred years ago, behind it was the Cousins' um, uh, greenhouses, and you can see them on the on the uh, uh, aerial maps, the historic aerial maps from the forties and the fifties and the sixties, right up to the seventies, and they were these huge greenhouses were demolished, and now, as you know, there's this beautiful open space Cousins Park, and so it's our intent to be true to the historic character of the house and, and the entire neighborhood, and also be mindful of that this house's placement, Cousins' house, backing up to this now beautiful open space on the banks of the Assabet River, so um, we're very much in tune to that and are, wanna make it so. So, thank, we appreciate your consideration on this.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the plans, the plan showed that, that you are uh, indeed are very thoughtful about what you're doing, so thank you for that. Um, just wanna think a little bit on the uh, the how to word the condition. Um. And, you know, whether we have, yeah, Paul is, Paul is on the building inspector, but um, we need to word a condition that uh, we request uh, some sort of uh, subs- no, it doesn't have to be subsurface. It could be a rain garden, it could be anything. Um, some sort of a stormwater infiltration uh, device. Um. To, to treat or to infiltrate stormwater. Um, and I think, can we just add that, you know, as as, 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 I don't think we're requesting, indeed, as I said, full calculations, but just at least a, a, a gesture towards this. Uh, can we just, you know, make this a condition and, and Paul, when, when they file for a building uh, building permit, you know, it's gonna be shown on, on some, on the building plans, right, or?
Yeah, yeah, you can say prior to the issues.
And you say like, yep, there it is, and then just sign off on it.
Yeah, prior to the issues of a building permit, uh, the applicant should provide uh, drawings of a, of infiltration system.
Yeah.
Something, something like that, she would, would work.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking to make, to not make more uh, process here. You know, or, you know, make, you know, reduce, don't increase cost for the applicant, so. Um, so if you can have that as a sort of a condition, then I uh, would like to get a motion.
I guess just one last comment before we make a motion. Um. I don't think this needs to be a condition, but I just wanted to make sure the applicant had seen, you know, while there were letters of support, there was one, a butter or neighbor who had asked uh, for maybe some assurance on, uh, the plans for a tree on the corner of the property and that the contractors were gonna park on, you know, the east side of Brown Street, and so I just wanna make sure the applicant was aware of those requests.
Yes, you, 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 you just, you, you resort, turn your, we saw that, and, yeah, we, uh, we're familiar with the tree, and we've actually been in touch with the tree warden of the town, and um, the tree is on the town's property. Um, it hangs over ours, but we're certainly, it's a beautiful tree, by the way, and there's some, and we, and there's some, although there's some dead branches on it with some maintenance, I think that would be a, you know, would be, would be a shame to lose that tree, and, but we're willing to work with the town. We actually talked to the warden and, and willing to make a contribution to the town, which they invited so they can uh, get that tree, uh, you know, yeah, cut the dead wood off it and so forth. Um, it's a, it's a nice resource on the edge of the park and would like to retain it if we could.
All right, thank, thank you for that. Um, and as I said, I don't know if we did any sort of condition around that. Uh, so I'm, I'm having to make a motion that uh, the application of Jane Adams and William Hill for a special permit under bylaw section seven, one, three, seven, one, five, and eleven, six. Um. To demolish the existing garage, construct a new detached garage, uh, and uh, fourteen hundred and six square foot addition, um, increases the gross floor area by more than fifty percent at two eighty-three Central Street. Be approved with uh, us making the findings that are required by the bylaw and with the additional condition, uh, as discussed, uh, by feel of uh, providing a uh, uh, infiltration plan, uh, before the.
Or that, that the, the building plans, the, or the plans submitted for billing permit show um, in infiltration device, you know, it might be a heavy wood, but an infiltration device to deal with additional uh, stormwater runoff.
Uh, so that's the motion.
Great, second.
All those in favor? Ravi, Ravi Faiya.
Hi.
Elizabeth Akers Moore.
Hi.
And Chair votes I as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lo- I love that echo. Um. Next item on the agenda, um. Quentin and Jessica Hart for a special permit on the zoning bylaw section six, two, seven, seven, one, five, and eleven, six for the construction of new roof, oh, new roof overhang that is twelve point two feet from the side property line on a non-conforming structure that exceeds the fifteen-foot uh, height limit within the required fifteen-foot setback at one eighty-five Central Street, staying in West Concord tonight. Who is here for the applicant to present?
I am here, Quentin Hart, applicant.
Floor is yours.
Uh, members of the board, I appreciate your time tonight and uh, hearing our application. Um, so our, our home here on Central Street, just down the road from the previous application, um, is a nineteen twelve constructed uh, four-square prairie-style home that uh, received an addition in the, the ninety-four, ninety-five timeframe um, of a different style and character to the existing home. Um, I'm actually, is it okay if I show my screen?
Absolutely. Okay.
Um. If you could just confirm, you can see my window, that would be great.
Yep, we'll see it.
Okay, so I'm actually gonna start with the photos. Um, so the phone, the, the existing home, the nineteen twelve home was, is a square, four-square prairie-style home, and then this uh, addition, which is actually uh, sort of uh, an octagonal shape with cloudboard timing group siding, um, was built in nineteen ninety-four, nineteen ninety-five. And um, there are a couple reasons why we need to uh, renovate this uh, this mass of the house. Um. One is that um, if I'm jumping over to the plot plan here, um, this used to be a double lot. Um. The previous owner had a separate structure here. They subdivided the lot, and ultimately, there is now a, a built and occupied single-family home on this lot here. But because of that nature, how this home was originally situated on the lot, all the entrances to the house are on the west side. There's one here and one here. Our family now has a garage in the back, and now that it's two homes, we would like to have sort of a entry that is closer to our garage. Um, the second reason is that the uh, existing drainage of this flat roof addition is these boxed overhangs. They're, they're basically drip edges, and they are all failing and waterlogged and time to be renovated. Um, and so we uh, are pursuing an interior renovation of this structure, and at the same time, would like to improve the conformity of this addition to the neighborhood and the, and the, and the original home. And so what we plan to do is to um, reduce the height of the overall structure by approximately a foot and a half. That's represented by this faint sort of dash line here where there's essentially an existing parapet wall that is higher than the flat roof, and we will bring that mass down by about a foot and a half. And in place of it, and in place of those boxed overhangs that kind of appear on each face of the octagon, we want to wrap and tie into the original overhang of the home, an overhang that goes all the way around um, the, the octagon shape. So I'm sorry to jump around, but these are just my best exhibits here. So today, um, we have these existing boxed overhangs that you saw in the image, and the minimum um, nonconformity here is that we are thirteen point four feet from the side yard of this adjoining property. That's our many, minimum nonconformity. What we wish to do is in the proposed plot plan is to, instead of just having those boxed overhangs in a few places, is to wrap into the existing home's overhang at the very same elevation an overhang that goes all the way around this structure. And that would uh, you know, increase the nonconformity to twelve point two feet from the adjoining property. So from thirteen four to twelve point two, um, an additional one point two feet. Um. Importantly, the structure and the footprint of the building is not proposed to be incre- increased in a nonconforming nature. This is literally just that narrow roof overhang that will go around, that's going to project an additional foot and a half. Um, and ultimately, what, um, while I don't have a rendering, ultimately, what you'll see is a lower mass, which will actually be a more gentler transition to the neighboring property. And you'll see, instead of this uh, ending overhang here, it will actually have conformity with the structure and tie into it. And then once we, you know, paint and do the windows and all the other parts of the renovation, um, we'll be able to make this addition uh, much more conforming to the original home and the neighborhood.
Um, thank, thanks so much for the presentation, and it seems that this is a, uh, an architectural improvement to this structure. Um, comments, questions from the board members?
Again, I'm in favor of this proposal because I do know that structure. Uh, I, I am aware of the folks that lived in it at one time and moved out, and then the new structure that was built on the second lot. So I think what, what has been described is an improvement.
Thanks, Tom. Elizabeth, Ravi, comments, questions?
I agree.
Good, um.
Same, I agree.
Let's open it for uh, questions from the public. Anybody from the public wishes to speak? Raise your hand. Seeing none, I will close the uh, public comment section of the hearing. Um, like to note that there were uh, two letters in the file that came in uh, from neighbors supporting the project. Um, and as I said, it really, it seems like a, an good architectural improvement to the structure. It's like it was an architecture a while ago, an architect a while ago who did a good sell to a homeowner, like that this was, this was good. So I think, I sure am proving this.
Hey, we're not going backwards, Dave. We're just going forward.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I, uh, nobody else, we, the board already gave that, I think, their opinion, so um, I would like a motion.
I move that the application of Quentin and Jessica Hart for a special permit under zoning, zoning bylaw section six, two, seven, seven, one, five, and eleven, six for the construction of a new roof overhang that is twelve point two feet from the side property line on a non-conforming structure uh, that exceeds the fifteen-foot height, then within the requ- required fifteen-foot setback at one eighty-five Central Street, um, be uh, approved uh, uh, with the findings that we are required to make under the bylaw.
Second.
All those in favor? Elizabeth Akers Moore.
Hi.
Ravi Faiya.
Hi.
Chair votes I as well. Congratulations.
Thanks a lot. Appreciate your time.
Yep. Um, our uh, seven fifteen uh, hearing, uh, Stephen Fusco and Olivia Percy for a special permit on the zoning bylaw section seven, one, five, and eleven, six to construct a three hundred and eighty-five square foot addition that extends the existing non-conforming front yard setback to, oh, at eleven Woodland Road. Anybody here to speak in, for the applicant?
Hi, I'm Steve from Fusco here, I'm the applicant.
Cool.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. You have the floor, sir.
Hi, um, let me share my screen here. More of a team's person, so bear with me.
This, this is the.
There we go. There we go. Okay, so, um. Let's go to the survey. Okay, so, um, currently, the existing condition is that my home has, um, we're proposing an addition to three hundred and eighty-five square feet. Um. All of it is in, within the conforming. The only area that is non-conforming is this small box bay, and then there's um, four feet of it's essentially like a doghouse uh, extension of what used to be an existing garage. Um, let me show a, a photo of it. It's right here. It's this little window and this extremely steep roof. Um, I currently do not have a um, like, at-grade entrance, so in order to get into the house, you have to walk around the side, um, which is the northern side and uh, becomes extremely icy with all the water kinda carrying down. Uh, we currently use this as kind of like a pseudo mudroom. Um, so the proposed, um, what we wanna propose is not increase this area, but just to raise the pitch of the roof. Um, currently, it's only about four feet um, at this edge, so you can't really get in here. Um, so I wanna raise the, the pitch of the roof so that um, I can put a door here, and then this can become. So that, um, I can put a door here, and then this can become the mudroom, essentially, so I can come off the driveway. And then just walk into the house, um, we're also proposing to have a, um. An overhang, like a little five-foot covered porch. Right here, so. This, four feet of it would be in the nonconforming zone, um. So, I, I, my, my street is in AA, so it's forty feet from the property line, so it's, it's thirty-five point. One to this little window bump out that we wanna have, um, and it's about thirty-six feet to the existing edge of, of, um.
Cool, so, that's, that's it?
Yeah, that's a.
Cool, um. Questions from, from members of the board, Thomas, Ravi, Elizabeth?
Seems like an extremely reasonable request to me, sorry, Tom. And I'll just say, this is the third out of three applications where we have all positive support, right?
Yeah, all three in Mass Concord, all three, uh, just like. Everybody's positive, this, this, this one, actually, in my time at the board, which is not extremely long, but I think had the most neighbor support I've ever seen.
That's kind of nice, every time I open one of those attachments, expecting to see something. Against all the support, so, that's great, I think it, it's a very reasonable proposal, and I am for it.
Yeah, yeah, so.
I think it's another, another architectural improvement as well.
And then some, yep. So, um, so since we have to do this, I would like to open this for, uh, public comment. Uh, the, um, see if there's anybody. Here to speak, seeing none, I will close that part, portion of the hearing, and as I said, I think there was a, uh, sort of a sign-in sheet. That, uh, that the applicant did, which had eleven names on it, and then I think there was another separate letter that came in as well. So it's, um, good neighborhood support always goes a, goes a long way. Do we have any discussion here? Do we, are we ready to make a motion?
I will make a motion unless anyone has anything else to say, uh, that we grant a special permit to Stephen Fusco and Olivia Percy. Under zoning bylaw section seven point one point five and eleven point six, to construct a three hundred and eighty-five square foot addition. That extends the existing nonconforming front yard setback at eleven Woodland Road, parcel number three zero seven three. Making the findings we are required to make under the bylaw.
That's a beautiful sentence, isn't it?
Yeah, I love it.
Yes. I second that.
All the, all those in favor, uh, Elizabeth, there goes more.
Hi.
Mister Ravi Fia.
Hi.
And Chair votes I as well, uh, congratulations and thanks for, uh, this presentation and getting your neighbors involved, that's very good.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thank you. Um, last item on our agenda is the approval of minutes, it says, it says the minutes of nine nineteen. But I think the minutes that we reviewed that, uh, Elizabeth sent out were. July minutes, I believe, if I'm correct, right?
Yes, but, so these minutes were from the, um, Novo Riverside Commons, the open and closed. In three minutes, I sent them out that night, so. Oh, so we're only. Nineteen minutes? Yes. The other ones aren't on the agenda, so you can't, so we'll have to put those on.
Okay, well, anybody, uh. Well, honestly, I, I just messed that up because I didn't read them, I mean, you, you send them out, but.
I can bring them up if you want.
Yes, why don't you?
Read them together. Oh, here, I just. It's gonna take me longer to pull them up. Yeah, this is, I like these minutes. Uh, I've read the minutes, I am great with them.
I'm also good with this.
Okay. I likewise read them.
Oh, there it, there it is.
We'll read them again.
Terrific, do I, uh, have a motion?
I move that we approve the minutes for, what is this, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three?
Second.
All those in favor, uh, Elizabeth, there goes more.
Hi.
Ravi Fia.
Hi.
Chair votes I as well. Minutes approved, thank you. Um, I wanna thank you, yeah, one, I actually have a couple of things before I go in there, um. Elizabeth, uh, Dwyane Leonard wasn't here, do we know, did she tell us she wasn't gonna be here?
She did send an email, she has R S B. And so she was hoping she would feel well enough to be at the meeting tonight, but she was not, so.
Well, not good, sorry to hear that for her, but, um, yeah, since. She's not forgotten, forgotten, so that's a good thing. Cool, so that was, that, that's great, and then I will, um. We will see each other, we will see each other. Um, two weeks from today, on, uh, the twenty-sixth. Harvey Wheeler, at six o'clock, uh, we have, first, we have an introduction from our, uh, consultant, forty B consultant. To give us some parameters on how we need to behave, what we can say, what we can ask. Um, so that, that's good, and then at seven o'clock, we have the first public. Real public meeting, uh, about the Novo, uh, forty B proposal. Where I think for us, it's gonna be just information gathering, asking questions, I think that's how I, how I see this, and then. Um. Then a few days later, October thirty-first. I, I expect you guys to come in costume, by the way.
Oh, your expectations, Theo.
Uh, eight fifteen, we do a site visit, we should, hopefully, the, the applicant will be able to either scrape paint. Put some stakes in the, in the ground so that we have some sort of a framework of what we're looking at. Um, but I think that would be good, and then I, um, also asked for a meeting. Uh, an additional meeting on November, November the thirtieth, but, you know, I know Elizabeth is not, you know. Chomping at the bit to do some additional meetings, but I think that would be a good meeting to have. Uh, because we'd get our, uh, peer review consultants' comments back by then. That's the hope, and then we can send off the, the applicant with the. Uh, with comments, uh, and they can, you know, modify, edit. Tweak their plans over the, uh, over the holiday break, and then we can hopefully. Mash them into our regular scheduled meetings come, uh, come January. Um, so that, that's, that's, that's my hope, uh, but, I know, I know I'm loading up Elizabeth's plate a little bit here, so. I feel, I feel guilty that she has COVID now, so. But yeah, I, I do, I do thank you, uh, thank you all for making the time for these additional meetings and for that site visits, I, I think it's, it's really good. To be, have a site visit with the entire board. Um, and, and, yeah, obviously, I'm sure there is quite a bit of, uh. Neighborhood participations and, uh, at that site visit as well, so.
Theo, could I ask the, uh, various. Entities in town that might have an opportunity to speak to this, for example, Board Health, uh, Planning Board, Police, Fire. Will you have those reports in? When, do you know?
Uh, no, we, we, we don't know, I, I think Elizabeth asked for comments, especially, you know, the, the, uh. Especially the West Concord, uh, groups, uh. But, um, they, they have been asked to submit comments, and, and, um, I don't, do not know when they are coming in.
Okay.
Um. But, you know, we definitely would, if we don't have them by. Uh, two weeks from today, then we should have them definitely by a later meeting, so that we can make sure that. We give the applicant their to-do list. Uh. And, and they can tweak their plans over, over the holiday break. For our holiday break, and then, you know, they, gives them some time, because, and I'm pushing this, and that's, since we, uh. Uh, just approved these meetings, meeting minutes from when we opened and closed. At that point in time, the clock started ticking, we have a hundred and eighty days at that point in, uh, time to get to a, uh. A decision. Um, and that, in my, my calculation, and, and that might not be totally correct. Uh, that gets us to, uh, March tenth. Um, so. Given that there's the holiday period in there, it's, it's a bit tricky, and that's why I'm trying to get stuff scheduled. So that, that we are staying within our timeframe. The applicant, we could ask the applicant for an extension if we, if, if we needed it, but we only need, you know, they don't need to give it to us, and. They typically do, but we need to show some good faith and, and some, uh, progress in our deliberations. So, um, that's, that's, that's a little bit my, uh. My push, plus it would be nice if he, if he gets it over and done with by, uh, come March the tenth, I think, you know, then. It's off our plate. Why are you smiling, Elizabeth? You don't think it's do, doable?
No, I was, I was smiling it off our plate, was what I was smiling at. Yes, let's get it off our plate.
Yeah, but, well, and, and, and the thing is, you know, um. Harry, Harry Dean, Harry Dane, asked. Asked for, uh, all the forty B meetings to be in person. I. Definitely would wanna do it the first couple, and I'm not so sure about later on, I'm, I'm still. But, I think, I think once, once it's off our plate, we will just go back to virtual, and all virtual. Um, so, plus, you know, getting it done, I mean, it's having. It, it, it's, it's a lot of work for the town as well, you know, one of these forty B applications, so I, I just don't, do not wanna drag this on. And, and, and put additional strain on people, so. Anyway. That's all I had to say, and I think I stayed within the bounds of legalities here, right, to discuss. Anything.
Sound good to me.
Okey-dokey, uh, well, again, thank you so much, and. We get to see each other two weeks from today, so. Thanks so much. Take care. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Night, good night.